Good evening. Today is Monday, November the 2nd, and this is the Cabarrus County Board of Education Work Session. I now call this meeting to order. I welcome each and every one of you here today. I'm glad that you were able to brave all this rain that we've had, and we are filling up our ponds. I would like to also recognize our officer tonight, Deputy Luke Zabo of Northwest Cabarrus High School. Deputy, thank you for coming out tonight and braving the weather. And let's go to our next item. This weekend, we lost a very important member of our maintenance group, our facilities maintenance folks. Mr. Chris Ferrier passed, and I would like to take a moment of silence, so if y'all will bow your heads with me, and we'll just take some time here to recognize Mr. Ferrier. Board members, we have before us an agenda, so I would like to call for a motion to accept the agenda as it is written.
I vote.
All right. That was David. And Tim Fur seconded it. All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Oppose, say no. All right. Motion carries six-zero. So the agenda is set. We're moving on to item number four point zero-one, which is the School Improvement Plan Amendments, and Dr. Van Heukelum is going to come forward. Thank you.
Evening, Mr. Chairman, members of the board. Tonight, you are going to present five amended school improvement plans. You already voted on all the school improvement plans from Cabarrus County last month, but last month, we were also informed by the state of North Carolina that we had five low-performing schools as defined by general statute. This is a new designation that has come in the second year of implementation of the school grades, A, B, C, D, or F. So last year, we had to deal with school grading, and we, in the second year of that plan, it included a sanction, if you will, for low-performing schools. What you need to know about low-performing school status is that it's any school with a D or an F grade that also either meets or does not meet expected growth, okay? So all of these schools that you see before you for the School Improvement Plan Amendments have either a D or an F rating on their school improvement, on their school grade, and they also did not meet growth. The get out of jail free card, if you will, for this low-performing schools is to exceed growth, and so regardless of your school grade, A, B, C, D, or F, if you exceed growth, you will not have this status given to you, all right? So that's our goal for these schools going forward. Our principals are here in sign of support. They've received this information. They had to kind of meet some of the guidelines of the state, but our school improvement plan was pretty aligned to the state rubric, so we didn't have to change a lot. We had to add things like demographics, community demographics, and make sure that we were addressing the gaps that we have in our academics. But for the most part, the same improvement plan that you had prior is very similar to what you see there tonight. And I can say, after meeting with these amazing administrators, that they are not happy about this at all. They are committed to doing the hard work with students and teachers to make sure that we meet the growth targets of our students, and they've embraced that challenge. You've had an opportunity to look at those improvement plans, and at this time, I'll entertain any questions. I might ask a principal to join me at the stand to entertain specific questions about their school, or Mr. Fail for the school improvement planning process.
Board members, I'm opening it up to questions. Anyone have any comments? Go ahead, Mr. Harrison.
I would like to ask what materially what has changed in the previous version, versions of these school improvement plans as regards to this current version at a high level? What materially has changed, and what resources have we reallocated, redirected to get additional support to these schools?
So materially, what had to change in the school improvement plan was a documentation of things that we already do, which is a comprehensive needs assessment. So that's a process that our schools go through in the school improvement planning process, and so we had to put that in the actual document for the state to see that we did that process. And then additionally, we had to include a lot of demographic data in each of the plans. As far as district-level support, one of the other things we had to include in the plans is the state requires to document or to show the level of district support that we're going to give to each of these schools. There were no additional dollars allocated. We just documented the support that we already planned to give them because of their academic data. That's a triage process we do every single year, where we look at all the data from our schools, and we decide which schools need the most support from instructional coaches, and how we allocate those coaches going forward. So we just had to document what we were doing.
So how are we going to go from Ds and Fs to Cs in this academic year? Apparently, just by documenting better the current resources we have? What's going to? I know the plan, obviously, is a desire and need to, and an urgency-
Sure.
-to change these grades up, but again, what is going to make that happen?
I would say the primary function is that of instructional coaching, and so our lead instructional specialist, working with professional learning communities, whether it's second grade, third grade, fourth grade, wherever the greatest need is on a weekly basis, is probably the most substantive support that we give our schools. And I believe that that coaching and support is going to yield better results. I also know that our principals have a renewed focus on the schools with this, not only the data that's been released from the state of North Carolina, but also having this designation of low-performing schools. Their renewed focus on academic press and high community in those schools, I think, will yield those results as well. The principals can speak to specific actions they're going to take in their building, if you'd like to talk to them, but those are some of the things we're going to do at the district level.
What do these schools need this board to do? What action can this board do to support those schools? I'll just open up the wide, broad question to make sure that it happens. What can this board do?
I mean, I honestly believe we're doing everything within the resources that we have to meet the needs of the school sitting in this room today. We could always ask for more money, but the elementary schools are all Title I schools, so they do receive additional dollars to support those needs. And, you know, we just need to execute the plan that each of these schools have written. I think they're good plans. I think they recognize the data and where the gap is, and what they need to focus on, so that they're laser-focused on the need. And if we, you know, support them in the execution of the plans that you have before them, I think they'll yield those results.
And, Mr. Chair, I don't mean to make a motion about this. Generally, I'm just asking if it's feasible to do this, and not to burden the schools and the administrative staffs either, but what kind of reporting or updates should we get per these particular schools each month, every other month, certain times in the next few months? How can we stay abreast of the progress being made and what's feasible, which hopefully would not burden the schools themselves?
I think, I'm sorry, may I chime in?
Yes, sir, please.
Each school, every school, updates their school improvement plan on a mid-year level. So I think if that update would like to be sent to the board, maybe that's enough to, for them to look at, and then we can read it on our own, and we don't have to, like you said, burden the staff or the school level with extra stuff. They can just give us a copy of the mid-year review, and then we can examine it as we see fit. Is that kind of what you were asking, right there?
Yes, sir. I just want to make sure that we-
That's exactly what I would have said.
I want to see five Cs.
That's right.
I'm looking for five Cs. Spring of next year, our better, our better, but just hope we have everything in place to actually make it happen.
And also, just to kind of set appropriate expectations for the board, remember, your school grade is primarily tied, especially in middle and elementary, to proficiency scores, right? And so that, the other thing that I would, you know, our focus is growth first and proficiency second. So if they exceed growth, regardless of their performance grade, they will not be a low-performing school. So we want to make sure that focuses on growing every single kid more than a year's worth of growth, and that's where, you know, we're going to make sure our allocation is.
Yeah, I want to make sure I chime in a minute, too, and realize, all five of the schools that are listed have a higher free and reduced lunch than the average of our district. And so what Dr. Van Heukelum was referring to there is, remember, that grading scale, lots of us in the room would argue and say, is skewed against schools that have a higher free and reduced lunch percentage. So if all five, if we're sitting here next year, and all five of those schools have high growth, then that means they will have exceeded what was projected for them. We would be pretty happy and satisfied with them. While we'd like for the grade to be higher, we understand that projection, and remember that if that happened and they had high growth, none of them would be a low-performing school anymore. So we definitely want to calibrate around that and say, it may be unrealistic to say they have to move to Cs because the system is skewed against them for a C, but it doesn't mean that they can't grow or exceed growth, and that's certainly where the focus would be.
Dr. Phillips.
Given that, as you said, the emphasis is going to be on growth, how much the student learns over a year, I noticed that some, but not all, of the school improvement plans mention growth as the goal, but in others, it's proficiency. And it just seems to me, given what was just said, if we're putting proficiency out as the goal, we're setting us up for failure. And so that would be my one piece of feedback, is that if growth is really what we're going to focus on, unless the state says, oh, the goal has to be, has to include proficiency.
And Matthew, just inform me that that was one of the requirements of the state, is that they have a growth goal, so while they may have a proficiency goal, they do have to have a growth goal, so that is going to be included, if it's not included here.
We've got that, good. Okay. Anyone, Mr. Walter?
Sure. So if we get the growth, what happens if we're not a low-performing school? If we don't, what happens?
So if they're a low-performing school two years in a row, then there's some actions that have to be taken by the superintendent to show more dedicated support for that school. That includes an assessment of the principal, and also the resource allocation that we give to that school if they're two years in a row. And ultimately, if you keep going down that road, there's language in the statute that speaks to the state coming in and working with the school. They have, there's the Office of School Turnaround at the Department of Public Instruction, so the Office of School Turnaround works with schools that are persistently low-performing, and so that would be much further down the road, but that's another lever or mechanism within the law that kind of adds more support, but also more, well, more support.
And I guess, as we've talked about before, and Mr. Phillips had a real good chart a couple of months ago, or several months ago, that really shows that the, I guess, the correlation between the free and reduced lunch and the actual performance, and how that was all skewed, that was skewed. So we're looking to, again, to show each student growing more than a year, and we're doing that by what, an EOG score? Is that how, is that the only?
Yeah, that's the only metric that the state will recognize, and that turns into what you've seen before, which is an EVAAS score. But yes, it's all tied to the EOG, no other-
So nothing else matters except for an EOG test score?
That's correct.
And that's maddening, but okay, all right.
Well, there's obviously a personnel component as well. What can we do to, again, this open-ended question, no agenda behind it, I just hope we can work on retaining the quality personnel we have in each of those facilities, so that we have stability in order to achieve the goals.
And the only comment I would make from that, and Glenda can chime in here more, but I think you've seen that commitment from Cabarrus County schools when we restructured principal salaries in particular, saying that there is a component of a principal salary that is directly tied to free and reduced lunch percentage, saying, those schools are tough to run, right? And they have, you know, these principals are sitting here today and dealing with some tough societal issues, and so there is some compensation tied to that that will hopefully retract, I'm sorry, attract and retain great principals and great leaders in our most-at-risk schools.
And we know that that dedication goes all the way to the, across the full staff. I just hope we can support the staff to press ahead, to move ahead with the work that has to be done.
What can the community do? How can we get our community to help us? Because, you know, we're dealing with five schools that are going to be struggling to meet the lofty goals that they've set for themselves. I mean, because they're all goods that they're having to work with, the students that are coming in are going to learn at a pace, but they also have to go home at night, and so what is it that we can ask our community to do to help us achieve the goals that are set here? You said we have two years to make this work, at which time, then we begin looking at a whole bunch of other options and analyses. But, you know, short of teaching to a test, what else can we do to get our community involved in us? And I think that's really the challenge that I set out, is how can we get our community involved so that we can lift these scores up and help these schools and these students actually achieve something?
You know, that's a great question, and I don't have a lot of answers, other than many of the traditional levers we've tried to pull in the past, which include, you know, mentoring programs, you know, having community members in our schools during tutoring or small group instruction, but even then, you know, these students, as you said, come from a background where the cards are stacked against them in many cases. They come to school not having been read to from the time they were zero, right? And so they start behind the eight ball. You know, I would say that as you guys are out in the public and working with civic groups and your community members, highlighting the need at these schools is the number-one thing we can do, so that the allocation or the community only has so much volunteerism in it, right? And so where do we kind of direct and push that volunteerism, and how we prioritize that volunteerism among our schools can be part of that solution. I know our schools, you know, just from the time I spend in these schools that are listed here, are constantly working with churches, they're working with civic groups to get positive role models in their buildings, to do the extra things that many of these students can't afford to do. And so I know they're always trying to work on that as well. But, you know, it is something that is one of the challenges, I think, of working in schools like this, so I don't have any specific answers for you on that question.
Is there a method that we can use? And I know we are very tight on how we allow our volunteers to work as to, you know, how frequently they come, and what kind of background and inspections that they have to go through on their personal lives to walk into the door. But some groups may not want to come but once or twice a month, and do they need to undergo the same type of scrutiny? You know, if we're going to get the community involved, we may not get the same person all the time, but to get them involved, you know, I think sometimes there's a perceived notion that there's a lot of hurdles for a volunteer to go through to get involved in the schools with the kids and/or our students. And if they're in a classroom setting with a teacher there supervising them, that's different than them being one-on-one in a semi-supervised role. And are there some areas that we can work with a little bit so that we can get these organizations more involved to show them different faces of our community?
I think that would require us to kind of do an audit of our policy, to see what barriers there are to getting more volunteers in the building, and then, depending on that audit of the policy, then we'd have to determine whether we're willing to, because it's always a balance between, we want a lot of people in the building to, with safety and child protection, and, you know, doing rigorous background checks of all the adults that interact with kids, and to what extent do we, you know, kind of go down that continuum, if you will. So if that's something the board would like us to address, we can look at that at the policy level and then adjust our policies as needed.
Before I would ask y'all to address it, it'd be something I'd like to hear from the principals, you know, perhaps you can just talk to me one-on-one, but just hear from them what they think we need to do. But I think if the community's going to rise up, I've got to, I don't know how to approach it unless I have an understanding from them what works in their schools and what won't work in their schools.
So we can certainly circle back with our principals, these five in particular, and kind of do a little focus group, and find out what their barriers are to community participation, and we can include that in our communication to the board going forward, and then that can drive our next steps in relation to community involvement. Yep.
Thank you.
We also can talk a little bit, I know Dr. Natur sometimes worked with wraparound services, the Aspire Grant at some of the schools that are here, and how those things can be connected. I don't know if she wants to tell them that, or if you can talk about that, but that may be something that they're interested in along these lines, right?
And generally, technology in these schools, how well are the schools equipped? How thoroughly ingrained is the technology in these schools? Is there any, and I don't mean to pretend that technology is the panacea of social ills, for that matter, but is there anything else from a technology standpoint that we can do to bolster the learning curve for these students or these populations at these schools? And that's a general question as well.
Sure, yeah. So I'll talk about technology and let Dr. Natur talk about wraparound services. The technology answer's pretty easy. I mean, they, the four elementary schools are all Title I schools, and many times, those Title I schools use that money to spend on technology. They're all very technology-rich, as most of our schools are. We do pretty well with technology, so I do believe that they have the technology needs met to accomplish the goal. And like you said, technology is not a panacea. It's not going to fix all of our ills, but it is a piece of the equation, and I do believe they have those resources. Concord Middle School is going to have that going forward, and we're excited about that. So I want Dr. Natur to expand on Dr. Louder's point about wraparound services, and including the Aspire Grant, which was a $1.53 million grant we received last year for after-school programs at Concord Middle School, Irvin, CC Griffin, and Rocky River.
So two quick things when we talk about having the community involved. One, we have parent resource centers at Royal Oaks, as well as at Wyancoff, which part of our Title I program has been to try to bring parents in with different activities, so things like dental clinics, eye clinics, resources for parents to check out and use at home with their children. So when we think about community members coming in, and Mr. Shoemaker, to your point of maybe someone's only coming in once, you know, we're looking for folks who can come in and do adult literacy classes, who can come in and teach English, who can come in and do computer literacy skills, because a lot of them have computers and things at their sites. And at Wyancoff, in particular, we have the Communities and Schools organization headquartered there, and so they have an office that works in conjunction with the parent resource centers. So I think there's a lot of potential with that. And then with the Aspire Grant, a very concrete thing that we can look at is, part of that grant is bringing STEM education into after-school programs, and we're constantly looking for after-school speakers, mentors to come in and talk to students about their fields, taking students on field trips, and those could be kind of the come-in once, do this work, make a difference in the life of a child, come back and check on them. I know we've done some work at the airport and things. So each one of these schools, while they're on this list, also have a lot of those kind of wraparound services that we talk about for after-school, that we talk about during the day, and so community support in that avenue, I think, is really important, because what you'll find particularly with these schools is that the instruction during the day is fantastic. It's what's happening after that time, and how do we support students outside of those blocks, and give them some of the things they need, whether it's sending food home on the weekends, whether it's eye clinics, whether it's dental clinics, whether it's things like that. And so we have some structures in place at those schools that we're trying to beef up, so I think of those two pieces as being really important to this work as well, particularly because it's so tied to poverty. So those are some kind of concrete initiatives we have going that I think can help.
Thank you. Anybody else have any other comments? All right. Thank you, guys. All right, we have our audit report for the year ending June 30th, 2015. This is five dot zero-one, and Adam Sapurik, did I say it right, Adam?
Yes.
I was a pure guess on that. And Adam's going to present us the report, and Ms. Klutz is going to be beaming on the side watching.
This is the summary. There should also be a letter addressed to the board. Sorry, thank you. All right. In front of you, there's a summary presentation, which we'll go over in a minute, also your sixty-some-page actual set of financial statements, and then a two-page letter to the board, and I'd like to start with that letter. The board is the actual entity that hires us to do an audit of the books and the records. And so this letter is addressed to you, summarizing anything that we may have come across during the audit, if there were any complications, any new accounting standards that were implemented, or just anything to note that we would disclose to you. And fortunately, we don't have any problems conducting this audit. All of our journal entries, they end up getting posted. We noted no large corrections to be made. We didn't have any disagreements with management on applying accounting standards or on any of the adjustments that were proposed. The one thing that I will point out on this letter is, under the significant audit findings, some aspects of accounting practices, during this year, nationwide, every governmental unit that is part of a pension plan has to implement GASB 68. This is, again, a new, any entity, whether it be a county, city, school system, countrywide, has to implement this standard. It's been coming for a while. It relates to being part of a pension plan, and having a pension plan that has an actuarially calculated liability, and Cabarrus County Schools, as a part of the teacher's employment plan, you're entitled, or you're allocated about one and a half percent of the overall teacher's pension plan. So in these financial statements, we have actually recorded that liability in the government-wide statements. It doesn't affect fund balance, except for on child nutrition. It's not an expense that you are going to be able to budget for. It's a change in the net asset or net liability of the overall pension plan and your proportionate share of that. And this liability is going to fluctuate with the stock market, on a little bit of a lag with the stock market, because it takes a long time for the actuaries to implement and record and value changes in the market, and changes in death rates and retirement rates. So, again, the overall teacher's pension plan, at the end of the year, has about a billion-dollar liability, and we've now recorded 1.5% of that on your books in your government-wide statements. So that's what this first paragraph in that accounting practice is, just letting you know that we implemented GASB 68 on these statements. All right. Let's see, now, the summary. And this is just an overview of the financial statements. If you have any questions about the actual statements, feel free to ask. I think you were provided these ahead of time, and you may have looked them over. Myself or Kelly would be happy to answer any questions on the actual statements, but for now, we'll just go over some of the highlights in this summary. The first page just shows your cash and cash equivalents for your general and other special revenue funds. These two funds used to be combined in Fund II, but several years ago, a fund date was created to account for these special revenues, these small state and federal grants. And so for analysis purposes, we combine these two, because these really make up the sum total of your local funds. So you see, as of June 30, 2015, your cash balance in general and special revenue fund decreased to just over $19 million. This is just a decrease in cash. You actually added fund balance, but because of the timing of some very large payables, your cash actually went- your cash actually went down. So, at the end of last year, you were cash-heavy, but you also had large payables to pay out. And so, that's just a timing of when a check was cut. So, while cash did go down from over, just over $21 million down to over $19 million, you, you actually added fund balance to these two funds combined. So, and you could see that on the next page. This is a breakdown of your fund balance, and it's compared to the fund balance that's available for appropriation. There are some components of your fund balance that are not spendable. Those represent receivables, you can't spend cash that you haven't received yet, and prepaid, and a few other things. But the most of your fund balance is available for appropriation. And you can see, as of June 30, 2015, over $18 million of fund balance, and almost $17 million of that is available for appropriation, available to be spent. Next, you see the, essentially, the net income for the, these two funds. A little bit less net income than last year. I think last year it was over $3 million added to fund balance. This year it was just over $800,000. So, while revenues and expenses combined in these two funds total over $60 million, you were able to add about $800,000 to fund balance. So, that's back to that original point where, while cash went down, you were able to add fund balance this year. And then finally, here's the numbers associated with those graphs that we just looked at. And I'd point out, the, the top section, the middle there, the liabilities, you see, last year liabilities were $5 million. At the end of 2015, they were just $2.3 million. So, that, again, that's that decrease in cash. And then also, at the bottom of the second section, you see the change in net position. So, last year, you were able to add almost $3.3 million of fund balance. This year was $891,000. If you look in the bottom of the first section, it gives a breakdown of your fund balance. It shows the pieces that are non-spendable and the pieces that are restricted. Those are the ones that are not available for appropriation. And then the amounts that are assigned and unassigned represent what's available to be appropriated. So, of the 16.8 million of available for appropriation, you've already assigned $7.6 million of your fund balance, leaving $9.2 million of unassigned fund balance. And that compares to, you know, $7.8 million of unassigned last year. Are there any questions on general fund balance or other special revenue fund balance?
Assigned to what? Were we, what's it tied to?
In here represents dollars assigned. You are now self-insured for workers' comp. So, there is some dollars assigned to potential future workers' comp claims. And what's been assigned is the equivalent of about three years' worth of premiums that you were paying is now assigned to save for your being self-employed, or self-insured as far as workers' comp goes. The majority of it, though, is what has been assigned in the '15-'16 budget. The, it's about $6, $6.5 million is planning on being spent as part of your '15-'16 budgets. The, the restricted pieces, the $600,000, those are the actual, you know, there's the general fund, and then there's the special revenue fund. The restricted pieces represent third-party restrictions on some of your dollars, those actual grants that you have to spend on the grants that they were giving you, given for. So, again, the most of that, the fund balance, 9.2 unassigned. The assigned is mostly for next year's budget, and then also the self-insured workers' comp. All right, next, just a little roll forward of your capital outlay fund. At the beginning of the year, you had about $300,000 of fund balance. That was all spent down. You're doing some major undertakings as far as building projects go. There's only $22,000 of fund balance in capital outlay. So, pretty much in that fund, at this point, you're on a reimbursement basis from the county as you repair roofs, build new schools, purchase land, whatever, going forward. All of that is, is going to be on a reimbursement basis. So, you're down to $22,000 of fund balance on capital outlay. Next, we've got some charts on your school food service fund. You can see here that your cash on hand, revenues, and expenses and net income are all very similar to last year. Your, over $13 million of revenues and expenses in your school food service fund, cash on hand, just over $4 million. In the last two years, there's been a slight loss in that fund. $100,000 last year, $120,000 this year. So, again, very similar operational-wise. It's in total compared to last year. We'll see when we go forward that there's just been some change in, in your revenue sources versus, where some of that money comes in on food sales versus federal reimbursements. There's a little change in that. But in total, very similar to last year as far as operations go. All right, and here's the, here's the data that produced that chart. You can see, again, cash on hand, $4.5 million. Liabilities down the middle of the first section. Now, this goes back to that GASB68 we were talking about. It didn't affect your fund balance in your governmental funds. Those, your governmental funds in your front two financial statements, we combine all the funds, add all your assets for your buildings, add all your liabilities for compensated absences, and now add the liability for your pension plan. But because school food service is a business-type activity fund, and it's on the full accrual basis, we actually have to record that liability on the books. And you can see the effect that it had on your liabilities in your school food service fund. We ended up recording a prior period adjustment to put that pension plan on your books as a liability, as if it had always been there. So, it created an additional $1 million of a liability and reduced your fund balance. Now, this doesn't affect a lot of the calculations. School food service, they're based on how much cash they have. A lot of the analysis for compliance purposes is all based on how much cash is on hand. This is, this affected fund balance. So, again, even, even though it's a new liability and it's going to change every year, it's not something that really is budgeted for, because it's not really a cash outflow for the change of this liability. The cash outflow comes in your payment of the retirement expenses. So, and that's what gets budgeted for. So, this GASB68, this pension liability, it'll, it'll fluctuate. Again, as stock markets go up and down, as the percentage that Cabarrus makes up of the grand total, it'll change, but it added about $1 million to liabilities for your school food service fund, and that came out of fund balance. So, you can see your net assets were $6.9 million, now $5.8 million. Also there, at the bottom of the second section, you'll see the, the change in fund balance, or the change in net assets. $102,000 last year and $120,000 decrease this year. So, again, very, very similar operational-wise in total. Food sales went down $200,000, but your federal reimbursements went up about $600,000. Any questions on your school food service fund?
Well, it's not a question. I'll just point out that while the federal reimbursement went up, our food cost went up even more. And so, the additional cost of meeting the federal mandate for more nutritious food has cost us more than we were reimbursed by the federal government. And I guess that explains why we had to raise our meal costs last year. And probably we'll have to do it again next year.
Yeah, there's, there's, there's built-in required food costing, or food price increases at 10 cents a year usually, until you get to a point where there's a calculation of equity where the cost that you're charging really does cover the full cost of a meal. And until you get to that point, there's built-in required increases in prices. Unless your child nutrition fund is doing so well and makes so much money as it is, then you can be exempt from those required increases. But, but yeah, that, obviously, healthier food costs more, and kids want to eat less of it. And that's, you know, seen here in the, in your food sales versus your reimbursements.
Well, that's not the only topic on which we have to suspend our disbelief, but continue with your program, sir. Thank you.
All right. And that really, that, that covers all of your funds. Again, we went over the governmental funds first, capital outlay, the little roll forward there. The rest of this is really just showing you kind of the allocation of where funds come from. We spent most of our time talking about your general and special revenue funds, because those are your local dollars. Those are the ones that you have the most influence on as far as making sure that you spend fund balance or save fund balance or whatever. But really, the majority of the, the funding comes from state. So, you see $160 million almost from state funds. And then, in, in the state and federal funds, they carry no fund balance. You're allocated what you're allocated, you spend as much as you can, utilize it as efficiently as you can. And again, $160 million in state funds. Your local does represent your second-largest portion, over $60 million. And then, you know, just over $10 million in capital outlay, about $15 million or so in federal expenditures. So, again, the vast majority of funding coming from state and local sources. This just same information, but it gets, now we're looking at it on a per pupil basis. You know, the, your state funding, again, over $5,000 per child. Local funding, $2,000 per child. And so, you can see, you know, these dollars and your, your ADM at June 30, 2015, looking at just under 31,000 students. And when you exclude capital outlay, because capital outlay comes in waves, and it has, you know, it's really not directly tied to student instruction, but you're spending just over $7,600 per student on 31,000 students, so. And then finally, not only do we come in and audit the financial statements and, and produce financial, you know, the financial statements that are in front of you, we also do our compliance testing. We're required to come in and look at a certain percentage of your state and federal dollars every year to make sure that they're being spent in compliance, in compliance with program requirements. So, and if we find question cost, dollars that were spent wrong, we would write it up and disclose it here as a, as a reportable condition or a question cost. And we didn't, we didn't have any question cost, no dollars, to be repaid because they were spent out of compliance or not in accordance with grant agreements. So, inside the 60-page financial statements, you'll find our, on page one, our opinion letter on the financial statements as a whole. We issued a clean, unmodified opinion letter. So, that's, again, a clean audit. And then, in the back, in the compliance section, there are three letters. One over internal controls, and then two over compliance. One for state dollars and one for federal dollars. Those two are both opinion letters as well. And those are both clean opinion letters with no, no findings. Are there any questions at all about any of the?
I have a question. On the capital outlays, we're in the process of building a school now, and we'll probably be building some more next year.
Right.
Will we naturally see that go up? Because I guess that would be a part of our capital projects. Is that, is that how that works? As, as the county infuses money into our capital expenditures, that number will go up accordingly?
No, the, being on a reimbursement basis for most of these projects, you're not really going to add much fund balance. You have one month's worth of construction on a new school. You're going to get an $800,000 bill from the contractor, and you forward it on to the county. And it, it produces revenue and expense of $800,000. No additional fund balance. The fund balance would come in the form of their just general allocations, their general appropriation, if you were to save some of that appropriation and, and build up fund balance that way. But you actually are, part of your general funds, you're actually, over the past year, have undertaken some projects that are somewhat capital outlay in nature. Because, I mean, you just, it comes in the form of general. You've determined what projects you want to do to make schools safer and what schools need work. So, a lot of, a lot of the, if you see the increase in expenditures and revenue this year, even just in the general fund, were construction in nature. And so, the, the new schools, the roof repairs that are all paid by the county, those aren't going to add to fund balance.
No, that wasn't my question, whether it would add to fund balance. But on the slide that you had, capital, local capital, state, federal, total expenditures, you showed approximately $10 million worth of projects, and I think capital project expenditures. And I was just wondering if next year, we would see that number go up significantly as we undertake the building of schools?
Yeah, the, the revenue, the revenue and expense this year, which was on this slide here, was $10 million, which was even more than last year because you began these projects. But, but yeah, there, do you know about what you're going to spend this year in '15-'16 as far as construction goes? Is it going, yeah, I mean, 20 million or?
Well, you know, we'll expend most of the Odell School. And so, you'll see that coming in and out. And then we'll start, of course, the Mount Pleasant and the Royal Oaks. So, you're going to see those kind of trickle in. So, you're not going to see the, the Odell furniture and technology until probably, you know, later in that, maybe even in that, probably this fiscal year or two. But it's just, it's going to just start kind of trickling in.
Right, I just wanted to make sure that what I was looking at was what I thought it was, which was actual expenditures, total capital expenditures for the year. But not only lumped into that is the school expenditures, but it's roof projects and any other capital that we spend.
Vehicles and equipment, yeah, that all combined, yeah.
Buses, okay. Thank you. Rob?
Thank you, Mr. Herr. What, how much is one month's operating expenses? How do you, how do we determine that?
For governmental or for?
We have a policy that says on our, that says the board will maintain a fund balance of a minimum of one month's operating expenses in compliance with the recommendations of Local Government Commission. So, what is that, what is that number?
But that would be, if you look at your total expenditures across state, federal, and local, you're looking at $230 million worth of expenditures. One month of operations. These, and the only place you can have fund balance is your local. These, and the only place you can have fund balance is your local fund. So you're budgeting for potential changes in state and federal funding, state and federal state salaries. Your local fund has, according to your policy, has to be able to react to, you know, these changes where you may you may not get the full dollar-for-dollar funding from the state when they issue state-mandated salary increases. So if you calculate your one-months operating, 12 divided, you know, 240 million dollars rounded up divided by 12, you know, it's $20 million worth of fund balance, you know, is just one month's operations. That's.
So our fund balance of 18 million is not quite there yet.
So when we set that policy, we were addressing the local portion. The local portion is really the only thing that you can control. So that would be representative to the $60 million or the $50 million that the county gives us, so that if you multiply that, that take that month's allocation, then that's what we're we're talking about. So but I'll tell you that we we have to react, just as he said, to anything that the state and federal and anybody else does to us. So, you know, I think I think that that one-months operating balance is a minimum, and I think anything.
The one month from the state or the local?
Local, local. But certainly, I think our desire is to have more so that we can we can take care of these situations that the state puts us in or the federal government puts us in, anyone else. But that was just kind of a minimum that we set because you can't you can't allocate fund balance to state or federal or anything else.
And there's guidelines that show what a desired or recommended fund balance to be 7% of total operations. That would just be even more, just that would be the $240 million. So counties and cities, they operate under the notion that a 7% of their total funding is a is a desired fund balance. A lot of a lot of counties and school districts struggle with what your fund balance should be, you know, and then obviously.
I guess that's that's the question. I mean, is, again, are we preparing for a rainy day? Are we are we protecting ourselves? Do we have enough for that? And that's kind of the question here.
Yeah. And it would at $240 million a year, $18 million of fund balance, you're about as protected as you can be without, you know, probably having issues with too much fund balance according to, you know, your county might think. But but if your minimum, if it's set at one month of local in compliance there, but what's considered a desired fund balance, again, a lot of guidance looks at 7% of your total operations, which would be 7% of 240 million.
But when you do that audit, you don't call it, you don't consider that restricted or anything like that?
No, no, that the restrictions, the restrictions come from third parties, specific grant requirements, your designations, your plans, your assignment of fund balance designates what's assigned, and then the rest, which is that unassigned, represents what you have to spend past 2016.
And on on your last slide, you've notated that the number of findings and reportable conditions are zeros and the total questions, question costs are null. And in your other reports, you indicated that clean findings. But but in non-autor speak for just a moment, can you tell us, is that an A or an A plus? Or is it is it is it a smiley face or is it a thumbs up? What what in slightly less professional, which I admire what you're presenting to us, I do, but how are we doing?
You've got a you've got a very strong finance department. You've got very strong controls over your compliance programs. This year, we audited, federal dollar-wise, child nutrition and your Inspire grant as federal major programs. And then your state public school fund, which is the majority of your state dollars, we audited those three programs as major programs. And and the, you know, the individuals that you have at director levels in the finance department, you know, they all understand what what dollars can be spent where and how to best utilize them. So the difference between an A and an A plus, you're definitely one of the the more knowledgeable school districts that that I get to work with, so.
So how fiscally sound is Cabarrus County?
The county?
I'm sorry, I'm sorry. No, no, I beg your pardon. I withdraw half of that question. How fiscally sound is this school system, sir?
The ability to add.
You've quantified everything. Now qualify it for me if you can, please.
The ability to add $800,000 to your general fund balance in a year with some state-mandated salary increases, that shows some very fiscally sound practices and policies in place. And there's going to be future, the rainy day fund, like I said, there's there's future 15, 16 state-mandated salary increases that are required that are all going to affect that fund balance. And thankfully, you're in a in a in a great county. They provide, you know, local dollars that you're able to, you know, spend as you see fit and whether it be in the form of local pay supplements or improving facilities, you know, that that definitely speaks towards, you know, your fiscal abilities in a positive way, I think.
Now I understand you. Thank you. Appreciate it.
Any more questions for Mr. Saporik?
All right, thank you.
All right, thank you. So do we have to actually accept this report or it's just there's no action required on our part? Is this a report?
Yeah, I don't believe the board needs to take any action with respect to the audit. It just has to be presented to you with an opportunity for questions.
Yep. The local government commission likes us to present it, but it's already been submitted for their approval. They'll go through it. Right now, what you have in front of you is a draft until they issue their approval. We'll also add to this some statistical data and issue a cap which will be put online. So, yeah, it's just the local government commission requires us to present it to you. And they haven't approved it yet, but I don't anticipate any problems there.
Thank you. All right, let's move on to our consent agenda. We have 6.01, policies and policy revisions, mainly PLS updates for approval on the first reading. Ms. Reimer?
Yes, sir. Good evening. We have two first read consent. 3450, this is a state board required PLS update that clarifies that high school principals must compile class rankings for listing on student transcripts in accordance with state Board of Education policy that's required. We have 3470 and 4305, alternate learning programs. This is a state board required, strongly recommended and recommended PLS updates. They make conflict resolution plans optional in the school improvement plan, adds assurance that assignments and transfers of students with disabilities will comply with the law, adds clarifying language in subsection C4, adds provision to section F, modifies language in section F, and updates our legal references. And the policy committee recommends those are approved as written.
All right, board members, consent agenda. I didn't see any comments on these.
One question on the on the class ranking, is that applies to everyone or just freshmen or going forward or is that?
We did have discussion of policy around that, and it does refer to everyone. And there's discussion with CNI and our accountability on exactly what time of year those those rankings will be ran.
Okay. All right, so I heard a consent agenda, so let's move on to 6.02, policy and revisions on the PLS updates. These are for approval on the second reading.
We have one policy, 3460, graduation requirements. This is state board required and strongly recommended PLS update. It dates graduation requirements for high school students.
Board members, is this going to be sufficient on the consent? Okay. Number one to 6.2, section seven, items for consideration for our business meeting. 7.01 was the adopted budget resolution. Ms. Klutz is coming forward to present that to us. Welcome.
Thank you. So we reviewed the detail of the budget in the previous meetings and before you, you have the budget resolution. I was also able to provide you with a comparison of the budget resolution from the previous year to the current year so that you could review that. And if you have any questions, I can address those.
Board members, I hope you've had an opportunity to look through the budget resol- the budget resolution. Who would like to, does anybody have anything they want to add?
Just wanted to ask, is this like a new format that you're presenting to us in budget resolutions or just more detail in this particular case?
No, so this is the the budget, the official budget resolution, the same one we've used. At the end of the the end of the budget cycle is.
I stand corrected, thank you.
Put it all together. You're used to seeing a lot more detail as we get here, but once we get here, it's in this format.
Got you. Thank you.
Mr. Walter?
Yeah, I appreciate giving providing us the comparison. That's helpful. Just can you go over what the big increases for the 5100?
So so because we lost flexibility for the teachers and the TAs and moving those things around, I had to shift all of our funding. I had to shift from local EC supplements into our local or Fund Eight Medicaid. So you're going from Fund Two to Fund Eight. I had to take my EC expenses that I was paying from from Medicaid, I had to put it into state. Then I had to take my TAs that I was paying out of EC and I had to put that into state. So it was a just a constant flipping to get to where we are now. So that's what you see there are all of those moves. In addition, you're seeing the state gave teachers a pay increase. So you're seeing those dollars in there. You're seeing the benefit increases and those kinds of things. You're seeing the increase that the county gave us this year.
Thank you. Just clarify, the state gave some teachers a pay increase.
Yes, you're correct. Now, we all got a $750 bonus, but as far as pay increases that continue, you are correct, sir.
Yes, only a third.
Yes, sir.
But I don't want to steal your thunder from the next thing, but isn't there some good news also in this on the local side for our teachers?
There's some absolutely wonderful news. Can I share?
Please share that with us.
So in the next proposal, I'll be sharing the details of pay increases for our non-teaching staff, and we're referring to them as compression pay increases. In addition, for our teaching staff, our county commission just several hours ago approved a 7% supplement increase for our teachers. And so if we look at the this supplement increase, the the part in which the county is responsible for the pay increase for the teachers, the teachers will have received a 28% supplement increase over the last two years, which is pretty significant and goes to show the value that our county commission places on teaching and education.
All right. Board members, with that, do I see this going to the consent agenda?
Yes, sir.
Okay. That moves us forward to 7.02, which is the salary compression adjustments for the non-teaching staff.
All righty. Yes, can you open? Okay. So first, I want to just talk about what compression is and what what that means. In the document before you, you'll see that, as you know, we've talked many times about our salary study that we did in 2012. And at that time, it indicated that our our non-teaching staff were were paid about 7% on average below the market at that time. We don't know what that number is now. The market's changed a bit, and we expect that they're probably even lower than that, but at the time, it was a 7%. And so we're in a situation called compression, and you can relate it to compression. And so it's the it's what happens when the state or the employer does not give pay increases because of the economy or for whatever reason for a long period of time. And then when we go to hire staff externally, it's so competitive that the only way that you can get them is to to pay them higher salaries than the people that you have internally. And so that's just a that's just a function of compression. So as we were able to use our state funds more efficiently, we we thought that the best way to use those funds was were to put them in the form of pay increases for our non-certified because we did have some plans to get ask the county for pay increases for our certified staff. So as we go here, go into the explanation and the issue of compression, we felt it was best to recognize our staff for loyalty because that's what gets you into the compression mode. And currently, our policy or the board's policy is to give one year or one step, pay step, for five years of experience. So if you come to us from the outside and you have 15 years of experience, you would get three steps on our pay schedule. A step is approximately 2 and 1/2%, give or take just a little bit depending on where you are on the scale, but it's about 2 and 1/2%. So what we have, we are requesting or proposing here is that we now give a step for every two years of experience. So what was the example that I used, 15? I can't remember, it was two minutes ago. So if we were had that same employee with 15 years of experience, now we would be into the seventh step and then the following year, we would be into the eighth step. So you can tell that that's a significant difference in the way that we are rewarding and recognizing staff and their experience. And so I'm going to go down just a little bit until you kind of get into the details of this plan. So with this plan, if we take all of our staff and we take a look at them, there there are about 1,609 non-teaching staff that that we were looking at. There are about 128 of those staff who will not receive a pay increase. They would not receive a pay decrease, but they would not receive an increase. In that group is your cabinet and your directors. And then you keep on going down. And so from 0 to 2%, we would have 170 people get that, and that would be 10% of our staff. And you can keep on going and, you know, I'll let you read those. But if you get to, you know, 10 to 14.99%, you have 251 people there, and then greater than 15%, you have 207% there. And so those are, we think, you know, as we evaluated the plan, we thought this was a really good way to reward people who have been with the system for a significant amount of time. And you can, the the higher percentages are obviously those who have been with the system for many years. And so when then we did just a Q and A, and this is, if the board approves this proposal, this is the document that I would like to send out to our staff to inform them on how this works. Basically, these are all of our staff who are paid bi-monthly, bi-weekly. I read the one under, our non-teaching staff who are paid monthly. Okay, so that would be a supervisor in the maintenance department, something like that. That person would be paid monthly, and that's those people. Who does it exclude? Excludes our teaching staff, our certified staff, anyone who's paid on the certified scale, again, cabinet and directors, our school building administration, OTPTs, there's a state requirement to pay them one for one step for every two years anyway, so they're on they're already on this schedule. So that's good for them. Subs, this did not include, and then tutors, it also did not include. And so then we we talked about why these groups are excluded, because they're paid on the certified scale, the state gives them the pay increase, and the local government gives them the supplement increase. And as we just talked about, they're getting. And as we just talked about, they're getting the seven percent. And the, the irony of this plan is it's really interesting that when we did the average on, on the pay increases for these folks, it was an average of seven percent too, which was really good, the way that that worked out. Okay? Then we go into how the service date's calculated, because I know that, you know, everyone getting a pay increase is going to want to know how that is. And so we have traditionally given our step increases in January and we have an evaluation date of December that we look at that so that we can release them in January. We've given instructions here, if, if the local start date is incorrect for some reason, how they contact us and get that corrected. And then more questions about how can I see my, my start date and when this is effective? And so we're asking you to make this effective as quickly as possible. The funds are there and we've worked through the, the details of the, the method. So our bi-weekly pay, if you approve it, we would expect for them to see that in their paycheck on November 17th. And it would be for the pay period of October 26th through November the 8th. That's a two-week pay period. And then for our monthly staff, we would expect them to see it on November the 30th and that is for the month of November would be those effective dates. Okay? There wouldn't be any prior period adjustments or retro pays necessary, because we would just make it effective and we would start that pay. And then there's a, an example here of how you can calculate that for our employees. So some of the benefits of this program is that it more correctly aligns pay with experience. It rewards CCS experience. And 95% of our non-teaching staff are going to get a pay increase if you approve this today, actually next week. And then even those who didn't receive a pay increase, so if you were one of those in that zero that did not get a pay increase at all, at least with this new proposal, you're going to get a pay increase more often. So instead of every five years, you will get a pay increase every two years. And that's, again, approximately a two and a half percent, because we're going to reward experience every two years instead of every five years like we have done in the past. Just some additional information here, we're not addressing performance issues here. This is not a merit-based system. We feel like we have to get up to the, the minimum or the, I lost the word, what the salary study indicated was the midpoint before we can start doing merit. Certainly, we would love to go to a merit system, but that, we're not there yet. That'll take some work. Okay? Oh, yeah. So what else? So is there anything else? So we had, when the state changed our flexibility with TAs, one of the things that we've, we've talked through, through the budget sessions and over the years is that the, the role of a TA is not the same as a role of a TA 10 or 15 years ago. And so we think that the, the pay scale should be more appropriately aligned. So our EC, our regular TAs are currently on a 56 pay schedule. They would go to a 57. And our EC teacher assistants are on a, currently on a 57. They would go to a 58. That would be in addition to the, the compression and the experience years. What questions do you have?
Board members, does anyone have questions for Ms. Klutz? Mr. Harrison?
Ms. Klutz, are you basically saying that about 1,500 of our employees will be doing the happy dance if we, if we approve this plan?
I sure hope so.
I think they will be. Thank you very much for crunching on the numbers.
You're welcome.
Thank you.
I have a question. You were talking about the step raises and you said that if someone has, after they get two years of experience, then they would participate by, how will we fund that? Because that would mean that we'll be giving raises every two year or two-year increments. And have we allocated the money or do we have the money to allocate for that? Because I mean, you're basically saying that, and I don't know how long you're going to continue to do that raise, because once we get to midpoint, do we stop or do we continue on or, you know, how, how, how does this work? Because I, I heard something that sounded like this was ongoing forever and ever.
That, that's the intent. It was the same with our, our five-year step increases, every five years. So someone got a pay increase every year. It may not have been your fifth year, but it was somebody else's fifth year. So, and those are something that I would build in using our growth or, or whatever. I believe that it's manageable with our growth. Certainly, if we get to a point where we have to, the budget is so tight that we don't have growth or something like that, then, you know, we very well may have to ask our county for that. But we've not, in, in recent years, I've never had to ask the, the county for those step increases. It's really not a significant amount of money that we can't handle with our state funding.
Because it basically, we will be probably needing about three and a half percent or about half of that, seven and a half, seven percent that you calculated the average on, because every, technically every year, somebody's going to be getting into the next-
They are.
-increment. Right? Okay. All right, board members, any more questions to Ms. Klutz? Mr. Dr. Phillips?
It's not a question, it's just going to be a statement. I think this is probably the best news we've had on, on pay in seven or eight years.
Yeah, I would tend to say, close to a decade, yeah.
And, and that is a wonderful thing. Some people won't want to, will want to give our board credit for that. I want to give credit to the previous board, the one that Tim Furr was elected to the last time he was elected, the one that Carolyn Carpenter served on and Lynn Hue and, and Grace Minett, who are now on the, the county commissioners and Cindy Furtinbaugh and Ms. Blackwelder and Blake Keiger, all made some tough choices back when we had some tough budget times. And because of those tough choices, we have the financial cushions absorb a $4 million hit from the state, which they laid on us without having to lay off 80 teachers and still, and still provide a seven percent pay increase on average to our staff. So thank you, Tim. Thank you, Carol. And thank you to all the previous board members for your stewardship of this district.
And Mr. Chairman, contingent upon our approval, of course, if we do approve this, next, no, if, if we do, is it appropriate that the board draft and put together a formal resolution to the county commissioners for their partnership and for their faith and trust and confidence in our staff and our, and their portion to provide these funds and allow us to move forward with these. I want to, I want to do more than send them a thank you card. I wish we would recognize the county commission for their confidence in us regarding this, this step forward. But I wish we could do something formal, expressing gratitude to the county commission as, as, as it is appropriate.
Well, board members, I don't have a problem. I think that if we wanted to show them thanks, I know that they would be tickled to, to have that type of support. So David, do you want to draft something up?
I was going to volunteer Dr. Phillips to do that, but, but maybe it's another opportunity.
Wait a minute. You know, if you come up with the idea, it's yours.
It's, it's another opportunity for several of us to partner on that kind of effort.
Who is the English major on this diet?
Yeah, MA.
So we, so we go, so, so we say.
All right. Well, anyway, the board members, do we want to put this on the consent agenda or do we need to have an action item and vote on this?
Let's have it on action, Ms. Carpenter's on here.
Okay. So we'll have this as an action, give Ms. Carpenter a chance to express her, her happiness over this as well. All right, moving on. Seven dot zero three, policy and revisions on approval for the first reading. Come on back, Lynn.
Absolutely. So we have one on first read action and that's our board intern policy that Ms. Sarah Stone drafted for us and the committee looked at that and recommends as written.
I didn't see any comments on this, so consent agenda? Okay.
Okay, up for second read, we have several.
There was one question I had on, the board, the intern was assigned directly to Mrs. Carpenter. Should it say specifically something to a, or a board member instead of just the board as a whole or is that, do we, do we cover that or we didn't?
I, I thought in the committee, we did discuss that each, any one board member could choose, but it would have to, all of you would have to approve, so.
Okay, that's, I didn't recall that part, but I guess that makes sense.
Okay, up for second read.
Still, still consent. Still a consent.
Okay. Twenty-one ten, board member elections, this is state board required PLS update. It was removed from first read in September. Board requested the policy committee review again and in the policy committee meeting, there was no change requested in committee from board members.
All right. Is that okay, guys?
Okay.
All right.
Thirty-one hundred, curriculum development, this is a state board optional PLS update. There was changes recommended by both the policy committee and a board member. So we took those changes, we added additional language for local efforts and added a link to our curriculum webpage and we added language that makes it clear that, to our public, that our curriculum is written by our local teachers.
Consent. Dr. Phillips did send in a, a change and we got that integrated. All right.
Thirty-two ten, parental inspection objection to instructional materials. This was board request for the policy committee to add the following, that we added in section B, well, we added the original EOGOC. The committee will render decision within 10 school days. And then changes recommended by the policy committee was sent back by the Board of Education to look at section B in the second paragraph and we added the language to reflect. Principals may consult with an attorney on all legal issues.
Consent.
Okay, our final, fifty seventy, seventy-three fifty, public records, retention, release and distribution. This is a board request for the policy committee to include a training. That training was included in section B.
Consent. All right. All right, it moves us to seven dot zero five, which is the revised academic calendar 2015-16. Ms. Reimer?
Yes, sir. So the 2016 primary election date has been changed and set for March 15th. House Bill 373 changed the presidential primary bill and was signed into law September 30th. The North Carolina law has moved that primary election from May 3rd to March 15th. The academic calendar has been changed to reflect that change in the law. March 15th will be considered a teacher work day and May 3rd will be a regular school day. Do want to inform the board that March 15th is an ACT makeup day. It is the only makeup day the ACT allows us to have. We are currently working with the state and the ACT staff to look at any options that we may have. Mr. Allred, the high school director, myself have worked with some of our school, high school principals on ways to possibly address that makeup day, looking at incentives to attend the testing day so that students would be more likely to be there, makeup on teacher work day, providing their own transportation. And then possibly in situations that students wanted to be able to make up the ACT, in special situations, could we work on some, some formal process for transportation? Our goal is to make sure that anyone that wishes to take it on makeup day would be allowed to if they could not attend on March 1st.
Any comments?
The only comment here is you've got eight weeks of no break at all.
Yeah. It does. That was everybody's comment. We, we concur.
All right.
All right, but just on that ACT, so you, if we don't get any other relief, we will have some location on March 15th where students can go and take the makeup? Is that what you're saying?
Yes, sir. Yes, sir. All right.
All right, consent agenda? Seven dot zero six is the 2016-17 calendar.
Yes, this is in draft form, first, first read for the board to, to look at is a 2016-17 calendar. We also included the guidelines from the state and this is our first draft. Take any questions?
My only question would be, is there a way that we can uncapped November 8th? Teachers have commented on this year's calendar that they would like to be politically active and they don't feel like having a capped work day is allowing them to that freedom.
Yes, sir. We, we did discuss that in the calendar committee meeting and talked to some principals and it is a general practice that if you are involved in the election day and working in that election, that you speak with your principal and work on that and that is an excused or an allowed practice. I, I think from the curriculum and instruction department, it was, this is one of those days that we know for sure, we're not going to lose or due to weather or other things that we can count on that for professional development in the first semester. So we did discuss that a little bit, as far as making sure that we communicate that those individuals that want to be a part of an election day and that are working the polls and doing some of those things, they speak to their principals. And I think as a general practice, our principals has allowed that to happen.
Is, is there a way to include that maybe in a staff handbook as a footnote somewhere that staff could go find without having to contact a board member?
We can probably communicate that a little bit better from, from both my office and maybe even our administrative notes to make sure our staff are well aware.
Will that be something that we'll allow this year as well?
Yes, sir.
Okay.
So you're saying in that case, I'm, I beg, are you just saying that's principals discretion?
It is, but it's also understood that this is, this is an election day and that when, when those people, that that would be a, an accepted request by our staff.
I was just, it kind of along the same line. What, what's our policy for allowing teachers and all staff for that matter to take time off during the school day to go vote?
They are allowed.
Okay.
Definitely. Anytime during the day, I think, is what we've allowed. Usually, I'm not really sure, some people may be able to speak to that a little bit more. Dr. Lotters probably worked with that more than I have, but as a principal, I was allowed and I allowed my teachers, so.
Yeah, no, I think we, we definitely should emphasize that too.
Yes, and encouraged, actually.
And not, not so fully booked that day for professional development that there's not, you know, a good slot of time to-
Chunk of time, absolutely.
-go do civic duty. As long as I have the podium. So, you know, Easter's coming a little bit later in 2017 than it does in 2016. So I, I'm wondering if we should put the week of spring break a week earlier so it includes Good Friday, which I believe is the 14th, just so we're a little, you know, a little bit earlier. Otherwise, there's, there is one full day off from the middle of January to the 14th of April. So that's almost three months with just one school day off. There's a couple of half-days, but that's a long time.
It is, it is. We did, we did, we have talked about that a little bit. We can definitely continue discussion. The committee felt as though our surrounding districts were also using these weeks and so they kind of weighed on that a little bit. We do have the, the break there at March that has a half a day and a full day on the 24th that they thought, and then two half-days that students would get on a Friday, so. I can definitely take that back to the committee.
The other thing that I see in that, in this calendar is there is very little room for snow days.
That is correct.
I mean, we are, if, if we have a week like we did, what was it, two years ago, when we lose a week, we are going to be going to school. We are either going to lose our spring break or we're going to be doing Saturdays, multiple Saturdays.
Okay, so that's, that's a little, that has changed somewhat based on instructional hours versus the number of days. So just briefly, we have to have 215 days in our calendar and they say we can't start, our, our government says we can't start before the Monday closest to the 26th and we have to finish before the Friday closest to the 9th of June. So we have to fit our instructional days in between that time with a total of 250 day, 15 days for teachers. So when you start putting those in there, it does take some of those actual full days. We choose as a district to use instructional hours rather than days. And because we have enough instructional hours, which is 1,025, it's on that little sheet that I also provided, we are allowed to have a little more flexibility, the superintendent's allowed to have a little more flexibility with possibly forgiving a few days and then using some of our half, half-days to, to make up some of- using some of our half-days to make up some of those others.
Perhaps Ms. Baumgartner would like to express her opinion.
I thought, I could be wrong, but I thought a few years ago, there was a survey that was done in reference to the spring break with parents. I felt like, and the parents wanted it, wanted spring break to be the week after, I believe, or there was something that I remember in reference to that, that they wanted it to be the week after Good Friday.
We'd heard something about travel, travel after spring break or after Easter.
Yeah, so, and is in reference to the big chunk of time from January to, we're used to that. I mean, it stinks, but, but we're used to it. We always know that that's a long stretch of time. I don't know, there's a whole lot that we can do with the restrictions that the state puts on us.
The committee did speak a little bit about that, and we talked about, that's typically when we do run into some weather days, and so we do get a little bit of a break every once in a while because we have a couple of snow days here or there. So that was kind of an offsetting point when we looked at not having a lot of full teacher work days in that timeframe.
Now, when we talked at the committee meeting, I guess we were talking about this specific calendar, and I brought up the Saturdays, and you said because we're on hours, Saturdays don't work as well because you can't do partials.
Correct.
So can you elaborate with the rest of the board members so they'll understand the issue with Saturdays as opposed to what we, the flexibility we've had in the past?
Sure. So typically, when we've used Saturdays before, we've been using days. And so when we would miss a day of school, we could go to school on Saturday, and a day would be counted if we just showed up for half a day. So we could count day for day that way. Now that we're using instructional hours, it is hour for hour. So when we make up an instructional day on a Saturday, we'd have to go a full day. And so that is certainly not something I think our superintendent is in favor of it, if at all possible.
So what is listed here, which a lot of times the parents use whenever we go on Saturday, these will actually be the dates that will be makeup dates for inclement weather? Is that correct?
It is, it is correct. And there is some flexibility within our instructional hours because we do have over a thousand and twenty-five hours, and Dr. Robbs and her staff have been working very hard on exactly how many we have. But that, if we go over the thousand and twenty-five, allows Dr. Louder's discretion to possibly forgive, as we did last year a couple of times.
Dr. Phillips?
Can you scroll down so we could see June? When are we going to do graduation?
Graduation is tentatively set for the ninth and tenth.
So we can hold a graduation today after we have final exams?
That is a half-day, and we do have a high school principal on the committee, and I also did that as a high school principal as the first graduation. And yes, we can, it's a strain, but it's at the end of the school year, and people are ready to get it done, so I think we can pull it off.
We've done that before, and that was one of the reasons that PLC goes first, because they're the smallest, obviously, and can pull that off with their schedule. So it is not ideal, but precedent's already there. We've done it, so, and we don't have much choice in this case.
I had one other question, and it's probably more for Mark. When we were talking about the year-round school calendar for Wolf Meadow, Rob said, well, how can we do that when the rule says you got to start on the twenty-ninth, or the twenty-sixth, and end by the ninth? And I guess the answer is, well, there's an exception for year-round schools. So can we just say that we're, we're going to do all our schools year-round and not start on July first, but maybe start on July twenty-fourth or whatever? A week earlier? August, rather, not July, sorry. Don't panic, everyone.
I will look, but I don't think so. In other words, I think the exception for year-round is really a true year-round. I don't think you can say, well, we're almost year-round. But I will, I remember, I remember looking at that, but that's, and I may be able to pull up the statute in a minute, but I'm not sure you can do that.
There is language. I'll speak a little bit to it, and then we'll let Mr. Enriquez kind of close that. There's language that if you want to start earlier, the school board, your local school board can petition the state, and in that petition, it should show that we have grave circumstances that say we are not going to be able to finish our one hundred and eighty-five days or a thousand and twenty-five hours within that timeframe. You can extend the year by the, by the staff coming to the local board and asking for permission to extend it past June ninth, and that's a local, more of a local decision. But to start the school year, you have to petition the state to do that. That's kind of in the statute, I think.
On this draft calendar, under the graduation dates of June the ninth and tenth, is a statement that North Carolina law requires all days missed because of inclement weather to be made up. Does that statement, I'm sure it's the intent of what you were describing earlier about the half-days and the hourly calculation of number of hours on Saturdays as opposed to a half-day and a full day. But does that statement need to be clarified just a little bit for the benefit of parents who might, if we get to that situation, we can say that calendar explained what we had to do?
Yeah.
If that statement is fine like it is, fine, but is it, is it clear enough so parents understand that kind of contingency that...
I think that is a carryover from before. It really should stay hours instead of days, right?
Yes, absolutely. So that's a change that we should make, and maybe a more clarifying statement for parents to read there.
Go English majors.
Yes.
The statute, the calendar statute is one fifteen C to eighty-four point two. The language says that except for year-round schools, the opening date shall be no earlier than the Monday closest to August twenty-sixth, and the closing date shall be no later than the Friday closest to June eleventh, the dates that Lynn just said. I think, and then you can petition for a difference. There are, and I'm still looking for the other thing, but I think there's a discussion of year-round schools in terms of how that calendar gets structured. I think you could, if you had a year-round school, you would be exempt from that, but you'd have to meet the definition of year-round school.
Our calendar committee on Wednesday will be looking at our year-round calendar from Line Coff, and then hopefully that will be a presentation to you very soon, so, excuse me, Wolf Meadow. Yes. Wolf Meadow. And that should be a presentation soon.
My comments, again, I sat on calendar committee, and the calendar committee has really spent a lot of hours, a lot of time trying to fit this calendar in between the restrictions that the state legislator has put us in this position. And we asked the state legislators to give us freedom to adjust the calendar. Probably only a week would have done it, but they did not vote on it. So we're stuck having to meet this requirement that really gives us the fewest number of days to make the educational requirements. And here we are, having to meet these standards with our kids with less hours to do it. And I think that's just not in the best interest of children, and I wish we could do something more than where we're stuck at.
Yeah, if they just made it Monday closest to the nineteenth, one week earlier, I think everybody would be much...
Which it does say, you know, waiver can, a waiver is approved, the start date can be no earlier than the closest Monday, but apparently that's all related to snow days and some history related to that.
All right, board members, do we want to put this on the action agenda or the consent?
This is just the first draft, so how's that, how's that work?
Consent would be great, but if you want us to take it back to committee and/or discuss it more next week?
Yeah, so you said you had a meeting on Wednesday. So the intent was bring this to you guys. If you had major concerns, they would take it back so she could bring back those changes next Monday. But if there aren't concerns and they're very good, then she would recommend to pass, right?
Absolutely.
Because we're actually behind schedule on this, right? Normally, we do this in the spring.
We do, and I think they tried last year and had hoped that the legislators would change their mind about that week, and so we kind of waited at the end of the last year, and so that's where we are now.
Well, board members, since we're meeting this week, you want me to put it on the action agenda and then we'll vote on it next week?
Well, I was thinking also with Mrs. Carpenter not here, she should have an opportunity to weigh in on this.
All right, so I've got it on the action agenda. All right, seven dot zero seven. Mr. Louder?
It pains me to inform you that we do not have approval from NCDOT at this time. I wish I could say I was surprised, but it took them twenty years to approve the planning for Highway seventy-three from Huntersboro Concord, and probably take another twenty years to build it. I just hope it don't take them twenty years to approve our driveway permit. So we are pushing all we can do. But we do not have a driveway permit, so I will ask you probably to table this.
So we'll table this till next meeting, maybe, maybe something will happen this week. All that rain, maybe it forced them inside to make a decision.
That would be a wonderful thing, but I'm not going to guarantee that, sir.
Okay.
How are we on the timetable here? At what point do we need approval in order to have this ready?
This will push our schedule, obviously, because we will not do much this season. There will not be any paving done by any means, even if it was approved today. We just want, the asphalt paint will shut down first December, mid-December, and they just will not be open again until next spring. So they may be able to go and do some grading, get some stone down, but it'll pretty much sit that way till next spring.
All right, board members, so that takes us, now I've got that one table for next week, and hopefully we'll have an answer. That moves us to section eight, approval of board member attendance at the National School Board Association, and that's an action item. Ms. Carpenter would like to go to the national conference, and she wanted to get our approvals before she began to make arrangements. Do you want to put that on an action, or you want to go ahead and move that to a consent? No, no, she's the only one that's petitioned us at this point, though. Yeah. Tim, there's a couple of extra seats for you. All right, so is this on the consent agenda for next week?
I would say consent, yes.
Okay. Moves that one on. Let's be nice. All right, board members, it's now time to convene in closed session, and I'll need a motion that we convene in closed session pursuant to General Statute one forty-three dash three eighteen dot eleven A three to consult with an attorney, General Statute one forty-three three eighteen dot eleven A six to consider qualifications, incompetence, et cetera, and General Statute one fifteen C, three nineteen through three twenty-one. Do I have a motion to move into closed session? David Harrison and Dr. Phillips?
Mrs. Monroe said that the board member attendance is on the action agenda here.
Oh, okay, she wanted us to go ahead and approve.
Well, that's what I just, we just did.
We just moved it to consent.
We just moved it to consent.
Well, this is say we...
Oh, it had to be approved tonight?
So she could go ahead and register.
She's not even here. All right, all right. Do I have a motion to approve Ms. Carpenter?
Absolutely.
For this? So that's Tim Furr...
Second.
And Rob Walter, all in favor of approving Ms. Carpenter's travels, say aye?
Aye.
Oppose? That motion carries six zero, Ms. Monroe, so she can go. And now I need, David Harrison, who's made a motion to move into closed session, I need a second. Vince Powell. All right, all in favor, say aye?
Aye.
All oppose? That motion carries six zero. We're in closed session.